The following meeting is ordered. Roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
President Byrne?
Here. Will everybody please stand for the questions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands in its light, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to appoint, uh, Mr. Trustee Cook, President Pro Tem?
So am I.
Second.
Here. Roll call.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Um, so nobody's got any speaking parts tonight from staff?
Chief Priest is gonna give a brief update.
Okay.
Sure, I just thought I would share with, uh, the president and the board, there's been a lot of, uh, news, you may have heard it, yesterday was a pretty important date, um, in implementation of what's been referred to as the Pre-Trial Fairness Act, a portion of the Illinois Safety Act that had, um, uh, been modified significantly since it was first introduced. Uh, frankly, when it was first introduced, caused a lot of confusion, um, through several trailer bills, those modifications were made, and then there was legal challenges, and you've probably heard some of these things. So, I just wanted to share with the board that, at the end of the day, what this has meant is, uh, very substantial procedural changes in the criminal justice system that involve, um, some of the work that we do in law enforcement. Um, we have been training hard, uh, with our partners in the county, whether that be the state's attorney, um, the, the judges, the court clerks, and, and other partners. And, uh, I think we're in really good shape to take on this challenge. It, it's, it's significant, and, um, I think, um, we've already, we've, we've already seen the learning curve that will happen when you do something this, but I wanted to let the board know that I think that, um, uh, Vernon Hills Police Department's in really good shape for this change. I think our community remains, uh, a, a safe place to live, and, um, we're gonna have to watch to see what the net effects of all these changes are. That won't happen overnight, and I would just encourage anyone that has questions to let the system run a little bit, and, and maybe after a year or two, some really smart people can do some analysis to say, hey, is this, uh, is this a net good thing or net bad thing? But, um, like anything new, there's, there's gonna be changes that you can clearly look and say, well, that was a positive outcome. Maybe there's other changes that you can look and say that was a negative outcome, but, uh, um, I think, uh, I think we're in good shape, and, um, substantial work on the part of the police department to make sure, uh, we're ready for this change, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. Anything else from anybody else on staff? No? Okay, then, next would be the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through G?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. No unfinished additional business? Does anyone have any new business or communication? Hearing none, then we would be going to adjournment, correct? To go to Committee of the Whole, is there a motion to do that?
Motion to go to Committee of the Whole and adjourn the Village Board meeting.
Second, and there's no, uh...
Well, we'll do the call session thing at the end of the Committee of the Whole.
Motion at the end of the Committee of the Whole meeting.
Right. Okay, uh, motion is second to adjourn, all who's in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we're adjourned. That may be a record.
Could be.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, call the Committee of the Whole, these are ordered. Uh, is there a motion to appoint Trustee Cook, uh, President Pro Tem for the Committee of the Whole?
So am I.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
And Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. First item on the agenda is the approval of the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of September 5th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion is second, any comments, questions, corrections, additions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Abstain.
Trustee Takaoka?
Abstain.
President Byrne?
Aye.
And Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, um, next item is the Planet Fitness, 431 North Milwaukee Avenue, Unit 100, former Old Navy, Certificate of Building and Use Conversion. Director Jennings?
Thank you. Uh, Black Duck Partners is proposing to operate a Planet Fitness from the, uh, the unit shown here, the Unit 100, uh, which is the south end of the center, just north of Sam's Club. Uh, the Certificate of Building and Use Conversion, we've actually had two in, in the last six or seven months. Uh, this is the first standalone, this is considered to be a permitted use, uh, due to the regulations of the regional PUD. Uh, so, the, uh, the only item in front of the Committee of the Whole is the Certificate of Building and Use Conversion. The certificate is required, uh, in this case, there was a, uh, a, uh, conversion certificate awarded at the time the Urban Air Special Use Approval was granted. Uh, that, uh, particular approval brought the non-retail, uh, uh, ratio at the shopping center up to 32%, uh, just with the one unit by itself. Uh, the additional space proposed by Planet Fitness, uh, would be 19,000, uh, and some change, uh, which would bring it up to 42%. Uh, as you know, the, uh, the requirement kicks in, uh, at 20%. So, the, uh, the petition, uh, by Black Duck Partners would come back as a, uh, as an ordinance, uh, if the Committee of the Whole, uh, requests, uh, that staff prepare it. Uh, I just wanna point out a couple of the, the items from the, uh, the application. Uh, as I mentioned, the unit's currently vacant, uh, it has been vacant with the occasional use as a Halloween, uh, store, uh, since 2011. Uh, the typical Planet Fitness produces retail sales of approximately $20,000 a year, uh, based on branded merchandise and miscellaneous food items. Um, Planet Fitness has also done a study of their, uh, existing locations in the Chicago area. Uh, a store of this size, a unit of this size, would generate approximately 700 to 800 visitors per day. The Certificate of Building and Use Conversion process, uh, as it exists in the code, was adopted in 2010, so this unit has been vacant essentially, uh, since about eight months after the procedure was adopted into the code. Uh, there is a representative of, uh, Planet Fitness here, if you do have any questions, uh, and staff in this case is, is requesting, uh, the consensus of the committee to prepare an ordinance for consideration at a future board meeting.
Are there any questions from the board? Concerns? Mayor, anything?
Well, you, well, the only thing that concerns me is again, we're not gonna get any sales tax on this, but it sounds like we haven't been getting sales tax, you know, for years, except at Halloween.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't have a question.
What, what are the revenues from the Halloween store? Even just that month, it's probably more than 20,000.
I, I, I don't know that. Sorry.
Just, I guess my concern is we're, we're locking ourselves into, into this situation indefinitely, um, assuming they continue as business. So, that's one concern of mine, the other concern, I don't know if the gentleman from, are you from Planet Fitness? If you wanna come up, I'd like to ask you a question. So, um...
And hang on a second, if you could state your name for that.
Yep, Ryan Hanson.
Okay.
And what, what's your role for Planet Fitness?
Uh, yeah, Director of Construction and Facilities, for the group.
You're Director of Construction, okay. So you're not so much into the operations of the, of the particular...
Correct, but I did work in operations before I did this.
Okay, so you're familiar, okay. So, uh, my concern is about tanning beds, um, it says in, in the packet here that it has various types of tanning beds. Um, stated right out front, I'm against those, um, and, as most people know, those are, um, great risk for, for melanoma and other cancers, and, uh, especially in younger people are the ones more likely to, to avail themselves of those. Um, when, when it says various types of tanning beds, what, do you know what it means by that?
Yes, uh, different styles, so there's lay downs and stand ups available in there. Um, they're all the same model, uh, they're all inspected by the state before we open, uh, to provide a tanning certificate for that, and then they're inspected yearly as well.
Uh, would, I, I don't even know if, uh, I can ask Attorney Ferola, would, would be, we be allowed to put a caveat on, saying...
In my opinion, no, i- if these things are legal, uh, the general public has the right to choose to use them or not.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I think our role as a zoning authority, uh, really, you'd be going too far by delving into the operation of the business, in this regard.
So our, our only question really is whether or not we agree with the retail...
Right, the conversion, the conversion, correct.
Okay.
Well, I'll ask, uh, I'll ask, uh, Attorney Ferola, should we set a, uh, a timeline on this use? In other words, you know, so that we won't discourage retail from coming in?
I, I, I would, I would stay away from that as well, if, if the idea is to, to not allow for the use conversion, that's, I think that's one option. However, uh, this, uh, this business is gonna put, uh, time and money into improving this facility, and, and putting a timeline on the use, uh, really is, is probably a dead end for them and the landlord, so, I really think it's, are we willing to move forward with this use? Uh, and if so, i- it, we should stay away from that kind of a restriction. It would be extraordinary to limit a business to a timeline. Um, I'm not sure what business would invest under those circumstances.
Well, and one of the things is, this has been vacant for such a significant amount of time, basically, and we've added so much more retail, I mean, this has been vacant since, basically, pre-Melanophy was able to predict that that was gonna happen and gave us ideas. Should we ask them if, if they think there's any other possibility that something else could, could go in there that would give us retail? They have other stores too, than that same location.
Right, well, that's what I mean, like, is there anything else that, that's, that's out there in, in retail world that is still looking for space?
Looking for 20,000 square feet.
Looking for 20,000, they say there's nothing, then, then, that might be our answer.
It's hard to fit, it's hard to fit, it's hard to fit 20, uh, someone for 20,000.
Well, you would say that, but, that's why I'm, I'm suggesting, you know...
Because I've seen a lot of different cities, because I travel a lot, and, believe me, um, no. Nothing retail, pure retail, like a store retail, they're closing. Stuff that can fit in that, this looks like an ice store right now.
Well, the thing is, we're, we're just recommending moving forward with it, and for the conversion thing, we could, maybe we could, you know, could we ask Melanophy for...
Absolutely.
An opinion on this, and, and that could be our, help us make our final decision, but, personally, I'm leaning towards, I, I, this space has been empty so long, I, I think we need to fill it.
I would have to agree with that.
And it, and it brings, it brings foot traffic to the area, which may help some of the other stores, so...
Agree with that. I'd like to hear first from Melanophy, until I give my...
Well, I mean, that, that would be, yeah, the final decision, when it comes back to the board.
When it comes back, but then that's up to them to decide if they wanna, you know, if they wanna proceed until we get that, that info, but...
Well, that's, we always get to change our mind between Committee of the Whole and the board, that's why.
Right, right, but, but it's all, also, sometimes they put a lot of effort into it in the interim, so...
What's, uh, do you know Planet Fitness is a competition in terms of member rates and offerings?
Yeah, so, we're a high value, low price model. Typically, in this area, um, you would see maybe a crunch fitness, but they take up about 50,000 square feet. Um, otherwise... Export? Export is one, um, you don't see many on the suburbs, you see a lot more in central to Chicago than out here. I'm not saying it's impossible by any means, uh, where you see basas, they just started to open around here, but they're also 65,000 square feet.
You gonna have a pool?
No pool, no.
Other comments or questions from the board?
Are your, are the, is your business model directed towards, you said, what did you say, high value, low price, so low monthly, you're looking for volume, then? Is that how you're doing, and are the members, are they locked in, or is it like a cancel 30-day type deal?
Uh, yeah, there's, there's no commitment with the model.
So you're just looking for massive...
You can come in tomorrow and cancel.
Just like continuous turnover, basically, is your model?
It's a younger market, it's kids. It's like high school kids, like...
Correct, we, during the summer, we offer, uh, it's called the High School Summer Pass, we offer free workouts for kids in high school all, all summer long.
And do you have, like, training programs, like trainers, like, that you try to work them into, and...
Yeah, so we have classes, um, not Zumba or anything to that sense, but general muscle groups, working with machines, showing first-time gym users how to use the machines.
And that's all pay as you go? The, the classes are included in membership? It's all included?
Hours of operation?
Uh, it's 24/7. Since COVID, we've been 24/5, um, just with employment, we're, we're staffed 24/7, so there's always somebody there. Doors are never locked.
Chief, you see any problems with that, where it's located?
No, sir, not from a public safety standpoint.
I mean, lifetime used to be 24 hours, but they stopped after COVID, and they're down the street, and I don't know about, Bear's Fit was never, X Sports up in Libertyville, and what's the other one, LA Fitness there technically, Libertyville too, so, you're not like directly competing anything nearby, it seems like.
Right.
So is this consent then, or is this to change the ordinance?
So the, the staff request is just for consensus to prepare the, the ordinance approving the Certificate of Building and Use Conversion. I just, if there's a consensus taken, I just wanna make sure that I understand, um, what the consensus is. There was a suggestion made to, uh, require some, uh, market analysis when this returns. I didn't catch if the, if the, if the idea was, as a precondition or...
This isn't really the, the same kind of thing, this is, this is changing the ordinance so that, that they're allowed to go in there, so, which is...
Well, it's changed to prepare to present as a consent then, there, right? So it'll be this, then we have to vote on the ordinance, and then they gotta come back for a consent of...
No, once we vote on the ordinance, then they're allowed in, it's, we don't...
Right, but that would be later on down the road.
But, but it doesn't matter, I mean, no, we don't...
It would still have to go to...
It's not tonight!
No, but they, I'm saying, they don't have to come back before us. The only thing that would come back before us is, is the omnibus bill of voting, voting on the ordinance to change the...
Well, no, if information came up that enough board members felt we didn't wanna do this, you could, it wouldn't, you know, even if it came back on our omnibus, you can pull it for a separate vote.
You don't have to approve it, I mean, but...
Yeah.
They still have to...
But why, why, why even do a consensus for a motion, for having them get the ordinance together until we...
Until we get the information from Melanophy. How long is it, you want these guys to wait?
Well, who's, should we, should we find out how many people are in favor of moving forward as is, without, yeah?
And then go from there.
And, and then go from there?
Absolutely.
Trustee Schenk?
To prepare the, yeah. I'm okay. I'm fine.
I'd definitely say move forward.
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of moving forward. Mayor?
I'd rather wait.
You know, if you're listening to the whole discussion, I got, I got a question. What kind of taxes are being paid on that building now? Are they paying, you know, full taxes to all the taxing bodies, or is it because it's vacant?
It has to be, it, it's, I'm certain it's being assessed as a vacant property after all this time. Uh, you'll be leasing, correct, you'll be a tenant?
Correct.
Yeah, the landlord's not here, Mayor, but i- it's definitely, we, we don't have the numbers, but there's simply no doubt that it's, it hasn't been vacant for 10 years, it's being assessed as vacant property.
Okay, so this use would at least boost the property tax?
That's, that's true.
Yeah, in all likelihood, yes.
Okay. You can go forward.
Okay. And we don't need a formal vote on that tonight, correct? That's, you got everything?
Just the consensus.
Okay, all right.
What we can do also is place this under new business at our next board meeting versus the omnibus, that way, hopefully we'll have some information back from Melanophy prior to, and, you know, if, if the opinions change, it can always be voted down as a no.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, I do wanna note, I believe I made a mistake at the board meeting, and totally missed citizens wishing to address the board, did I not? Yeah, and...
You can take, you can take...
Can we do that now?
Sure.
Is that, okay, all right, thank you. Um, do we have any citizen wishing, because, yeah, could you come on up? And I apologize for missing that at the board meeting?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christine Spieslaw, I do live in Vernon Hills, and I would like to address the Village Board regarding the miracle in Mundeline that occurred 10 days ago. Um, I'm a nurse by training, and, um, yes, I was affected by the, um, events that happened for those three days, but what I would like to address this board, because I realize this is Mund, this is not Mundeline, this is Vernon Hills, um, I would like to address the board regarding the unintended consequences of the miracle in Mundeline on the village of Vernon Hills.
For the audience, can you, um, explain what, what that was?
I'm sorry?
Can you explain what the miracle in Mundeline was?
That's a great question. It was the, um, my understanding of it, and it was in the Chicago Tribune on Saturday, I did not bring that article with me, I do have it at home. The dispensary in Mundeline, the Rise Dispensary, hosted an outdoor music festival, and also allowed, um, con, uh...
Consumption.
Consumption, thank you, of cannabis in an open fashion, um, on their grounds, and they had it all blocked off. Um, my understanding was there was 5,000 attendees, many who drove and parked in the Medline facilities to attend this event. Um, the reason I would like to discuss the unintended consequences with the village of Vernon Hills is that, in order to get to that Mundeline facility, many people came probably from, because it was 5,000 attendees, came from the toll road through Vernon Hills to get to that facility, and to get home after attending that event, they were, again, driving through Vernon Hills to get home. My concern is that currently, um, and I've spoken with a forensic toxicologist about this, is that there is no gold standard for determining, um, cannabis toxicity, um, in people who have consumed it or, um, secondhand, um, exposure to it via secondhand smoke. Recently, actually this month, um, the Journal of the American Medical Association released a double-blind study that looked at, um, the evaluation of field sobriety tests for identifying drivers under the influence of cannabis. And through this double-blind study, highly trained police officers or highly trained staff, um, were unable, through field sobriety tests, to accurately identify intoxicated drivers or intoxicated persons using these field sobriety tests. So my concern is it didn't happen this year, but it may happen next year, and it may happen the following year, that someone's daughter, someone's parent, someone's loved one, is going to be involved in, in a traffic accident from one of these impaired drivers who's attended the, um, miracle in Mundeline. I, uh, um, attended the board meeting in Mundeline on Monday, last Monday, the day after, uh, after the weekend event, and I was assured by event organizers that they went around and were just checking on people to make sure they were okay, and based on this Journal of Medical, uh, American Medical Association, I'm like, I'd love to know how that happened, I'd love to know what kind of training this person had, I'd love to know what his metrics were to identify people who were, um, intoxicated by cannabis. So my concern for the village of Vernon Hills and the people who, um, on Route 60, on Route 45 here, who, uh, who use these facility, or use the, the roads, um, something's gonna happen someday, and what can the village of Vernon Hills do to protect its citizens, its residents, and the people who, um, visit the businesses on Route 60?
Um, can we address, gee, because we took extra precautions, is there anything you, I mean, I know, do know that we had extra eyes all over the place to, you know...
Yeah.
To account for, uh, safety bars, but, um, I, I don't, um, kind of at a loss of anybody, or maybe counsel, is, I mean, is there really anything we can...
Mr. President, I, I, to your question, right, you, you asked me, we did, um, have , uh, extra staffing, uh, working those days, we did monitor, uh, the area, we had also responded with, uh, requests to provide Mundeline extra personnel, so we actually hired back a couple of officers to be dedicated to that event on Mundeline's dime, so they reimburse the village for the cost of those two extra officers. So, to your question, I would, I would say that, we did, we did know about the event, Mundeline did communicate with us, and we certainly were out there, um, uh, doing our best to make sure that the village was safe.
So then, to the resident's point, um, how do you feel about the, the JAMA or whatever article it was, in, in terms of your ability to identify people who are actually intoxicated?
It, it, this is, uh, I would tell you this, we arrest people today for driving under the, the influence of marijuana.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there is no doubt, um, the, the testing mechanisms are behind what we'd like them to be, there's not a portable breath test, there's not a breathalyzer test, um, we're, I, I have paid somewhat attention to some of the developments, um, regards to that, we would like there to be, um, more testing resources out there, but, um, with that being said, we still conduct, uh, field sobriety tests, we have, um, specialized officers that have gone through what's called drug recognition expert, um, uh, training, where they actually attend training classes and work with addicts that are under the influence to learn how to assess this. Uh, I wish I had more of those, um, but we share those DRE experts throughout the county, so, um, I, I would just say that, uh, th- there is absolutely a need for further development when it comes to roadside chemical testing and establishing, um, a clear standard of what is authorized and what is not, um, it, it's, it's a challenge.
I, I know sometimes I'll be just driving in my car behind someone who is vaping marijuana, and I can smell it coming through my vents, does that ever happen to you or your officers? Are they, are you able to arrest someone if you actually smell it?
We certainly make investigative stops, um, when we encounter that, uh, I, I can tell you that happens with, I don't wanna say regularity, but I've read several police reports that that was the, uh, reason to make a traffic stop?
Yeah.
Because, um, even though the use of cannabis products in Illinois has been legalized, you cannot use it while driving, you cannot use it in public...
Does that ever happen to you or your officers? Are they, are you able to arrest someone if you actually smell it?
We certainly make investigative stops when we encounter that. I, I can tell you that happens with, I don't want to say regularity, but I've read several police reports that that was the reason to make a traffic stop.
Yeah.
Because even though the use of cannabis products in Illinois has been legalized, you cannot use it while driving, you cannot use it in public, in, in sight of other people. And so, yeah, using cannabis while driving is illegal, and will get you pulled over, and we have arrested people for that very issue.
How, how are they able to get around that use in public aspect for their event?
I, I have, I, I don't know enough about that. I just can't.
So this is what I heard. I didn't hear about Mundaline, but I heard Cypress Hill was there, really, okay. So someone owns that lot as a private lot, and some promotions company, they're going to do it again. So really, to me, it's like, you know, it's up to the village of Mundaline whether or not they're going to, you know, allow this to happen, right? I mean, do they have to get some sort of permission? Huh? Not from Marvill, no. No, not from Marvill. I'm talking Mundaline, I'm talking, it's Mundaline, really, we can't really.
Yeah, it is, it is Mundaline, I've addressed Mundaline, yeah.
Special event in Mundaline, and there may have been some zoning relief, special event.
Right, so that's the village of Mundaline to address.
They've had a permit for it, so.
It, it is, and I've spoken with Mundaline, I've gotten their answer. My concern now is the unintended consequences to the village of Vernon Hills based on Mundaline's actions. That's my concern. I'm a nurse, I've been in the ER once an accident victim has come in, it's devastating. And what can we as Vernon Hills do to prevent that from happening in our village due to Mundaline's actions?
All, all we can do is law enforcement can, you know, act within the confines of the law and, and stop people that are appearing to violate the driving rules.
Yeah, because even things like the streets, I mean, Route 60 is a strategic regional artery, and it's totally under the control of the state of Illinois in terms of traffic flow and stuff like that, but all we can do is enforcement. And, and, and compliments to our department for, you know, all the extra work that you guys put in to, to handle that situation.
You know, you want, it's obviously, you're very passionate about it, to you over here. Hi. Sorry. I guess I'm just not lighting up the room today. The, you know, if your friends and your neighbors and people in your community have the same opinion as you, there's ways to go about it and just make sure you're, you're organized, you're prepared, you know, and, and when these agendas come up, because when they come for their permit application, voice your opinion. I mean, that's the best thing you can do, and vote, obviously, for your constituency. You know, they're like, and it's, I mean, who knows? Like we said, we're not Mundaline. I'm not exactly sure what the process was, how this did get put on the, but you're a taxpayer, you have a voice, there's other, I'm going to guess there's probably other neighbors and friends that have a similar opinion. That's the best thing you can do, you know? And talk to each individual, it's your, are they, what are they, they're village trustees up there too, so.
Yeah, I, I was there the day after it happened, and they're very proud of themselves.
Unfortunately, it's too late, right? For that year, but you never know, but they can be, you know, just, where's the pressure coming from?
You find out before and go to a board meeting, you believe what your voice can do.
Yeah.
It is amazing. And if you have other people that voice their opinion, you have them come with you.
I was quoted in the Daily Herald, I was misquoted in the Daily Herald, my testimony, so.
Mr. President, I just, where the board is discussing this, I, I feel it's probably appropriate to share with you, I did talk to some of our officers that work this, that were on duty during this event. And I, you know, one of our neighborhoods, Gross Point Village, goes that far north up near, and two things that my officers witnessed, and in talking with members of that neighborhood, was the odor of cannabis was very clear throughout the neighborhood, and the, several comments about the profanity of the entertainment PA system. So.
Yeah, I.
Those are comments I heard, I, I just think as you're talking about it.
No, I got the same from several Gross Point Village people that I play golf with on a regular basis, that they, they were, in fact, they were out talking to one of our officers, and, and again, happy that we had an officer there, so.
Yeah, I also quoted Mundaline their outdoor entertainment village noise ordinance, I quoted it to them, and I was dismissed, and that was not included in my comments on the, in the Daily Herald paper either. But my concern is for Vernon Hills and the unintended consequences to Vernon Hills based on the availability to identify cannabis toxicity at this time. The forensic toxicologist I talked, I spoke with, she said that the way cannabis works, and because every cannabis variety, whatever, has a different level of toxicity, and our bodies are variable in how we process that, the cannabinoids, that there's no gold standard, just like with alcohol, she can quote you based on your height, your weight, and your consumption, hour by hour, what your blood alcohol level is, that cannot be done with cannabis.
Right.
Okay. And I'm happy to share literature, scientific literature, if anybody wants it, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your voice. Anybody else? Okay.
Kevin, can you kind of make a note, it's kind of when this comes up with Mundaline next year, just kind of let us know?
Will he know?
Well, if we're monitoring, they, you guys monitor other villages and stuff too.
Yes. And, and, and they did, you know, work with our department at?
I mean, police head.
Yeah, but you didn't, you didn't get the letter till after it was approved, probably.
You probably read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if it's affecting our boundary lines and stuff, we have a say.
I mean, should we, should we send them a letter?
Well, we should want to address, we could address the board, I mean. Yeah, the, the complaints I got from Gross Point Village, I intend to address with the Mundaline.
So Gross Point, Vernon Hills, you're?
So, so maybe we should send a letter to Mundaline saying, you know, we know you were happy about this, and you might have gotten kudos from various groups, but we just want to let you know that some of our citizens aren't, weren't so happy about it in going forward.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I definitely don't have a problem with that. Okay.
When was the last time Mundaline, actually, I'm not going to get into it right now.
So.
All right.
So can we, what do you think about that?
I mean, we have, we have relationships with the village officials, so we can try first a more.
Yeah, more informal way, it doesn't have to be a formal letter of, but.
And we've already, actually, I know it was a week ago, or a little over a week ago, we've already shared feedback with them regarding noise, and I, I believe the other complaint we got was some of the profanity used by some of the performers that could be audible from some of the neighbor, nearby neighborhoods, so.
Yeah.
So noise, profanity, smell.
Yeah, that was the biggest complaint. That was actually the biggest complaint I got, was the, the, the amount of obscenity that was.
We've, we've already shared that feedback directly with their administrator, and they're, they're aware of that. Yeah, we, we will monitor the, as best we can, the special event permit for next year, and, you know, if, if need be, have further correspondence on any, any other requests we have in Vernon Hills.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Kevin.
So then next thing would be a motion to adjourn Committee of the Hall and go to close session four?
Correct, this is for lease of property, litigation, and approval of minutes.
Okay. Is there a motion to that extent?
So am I.
Second. Okay. Well, roll call, please.
Trustee Sheng?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
Trustee Markworth?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Protam Cook?
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned and will conduct no business after we come out of closed session. Good night, everyone.